Ready to start? Okay. The fifth grade graduation was today. Wow, it's scorcher, but you know, thank God for the wind that blows through. And look at these flowers that they gave me. I always go to the graduation. That's like a going away gift. And thank you for things that I've done and we've done to help the school. So that was really nice, actually. So, all right. I am calling this meeting to order. It is 7:04. And we have approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of May 3rd.
It's 6:58 where I live.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, wait here, wait a minute. You're right. My phone says 6:58. My computer says 7:04. So I guess we'll wait two more minutes.
So to get those documents, do you have to be online, like for email? Google mail?
Not Google mail. Any email that I send you.
Because I have a Zoom account and that's where I'm at. I don't have any emails. I don't have any attachments. I'm just on Zoom.
Okay, now you would open up your Outlook and they'll all be in there. So that your email Outlook.
Yeah, but I'm gonna lose everybody.
No, you shouldn't. If you go, so if you go up in, in the right hand corner of where you're, so are we taking up your whole screen?
No.
Okay, because you would just go.
I mean, I can maximize you to take up the whole screen, but.
Nope, nope, you don't want to do that. But if you go down along the bottom of the, of, you can open your Outlook where your emails are. And not on the Zoom screen on your computer.
Mm-hmm. I don't have Outlook on the bottom. I got Firefox. I've got.
Where do your emails go to?
Google.
Oh, all right, well, so then can you open that?
I'm afraid I'm gonna lose everybody and have to sign in again. And it's time.
No, as long as you're not doing it on this black screen that we're on, you go over onto your computer.
All right, go ahead.
No? Oh, boy. I mean, I have to see how I could share. So you don't have any of the attachments?
Julie used to put them up and then I would see them, yeah.
All right. So you can't open your emails right now?
It'd be risky.
Risky. All right, let me see.
Well, let's begin. I mean, we could, we could go back.
We can start.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So now I'm going to officially call this meeting to order now that we have all our clocks set here. We welcome those that are, that are on here. So we have the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting, May 3rd.
So moved.
I will second.
Okay. I don't know if there's any corrections, anything?
No, they're good.
Nothing? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the tax collectors report. Oops, oh my goodness. I'm calling. The tax collector has a request for refunds for property taxes. There's number one, Rochelle Brown and the amount of $9.48. And then Financial Service Vehicle Trust for $72.05 for a total of $81.53. Motion to approve those.
So moved.
Refunds.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just want to say, you know, as of May 31st, the tax collector, her current collection rate is 99.5. So that is.
Get after those .5 for crying out loud.
So it is really, she's done an excellent job in collecting. You know, after people were given that delay through April. All right.
The people have done an excellent job paying their bills.
Yes, they have. They have, and we appreciate that. Okay, we have communications from the public. I see Todd. Do you have anything, Todd? Let's see you on here.
Yes, actually I do. I'm sorry I didn't call in for the agenda. I was wondering if I could talk for a little bit quick. I won't bend your ear for long. The fire department. We went to the finance board in town and we discussed everything we were gonna try and do and spend money on and everything. And I know I talked to you about this a while ago, Barbara, but there are three trees over by the side of the firehouse where we park and the ball field edge there that are all split and rotten in the top. And we were gonna take them down. They're broken. We were, we were paying for it and we're doing the work. So we just wanted to come forward and tell you what's going on with that. Because it's gonna, they're dropping big limbs and it's gonna hit somebody's car that's parked there or a fire truck or something else, so.
Great, Todd. Thanks for keeping us in the loop.
That was, one of them is an ash tree that's dying anyways, so.
They all are.
Yeah, unfortunately. So just to let you know, that's kind of our program, what's going on. And we're gonna take care of it here pretty quick and pretty soon, so.
Okay, now those are, we did talk about this a while ago and now, but let me, a lot of things got in the way. And while you're on here, I want to thank you for all the help that you've done working with Sarah to get the firehouse back in order after that event that happened. And you know, you really stayed on top of everything, got answers, dealt with insurance. So thank you, did a great job.
Well, that's, thank you, but there's a whole bunch of people working on that too. And I will say, all the adjusters and everything that we've had to work on, everything's gone very smoothly. And it, it's taken a little bit longer than we wanted and that we thought it would take, but we're getting there. We got a lot of other projects done inside the firehouse while we were out.
I know, it's amazing.
It really came out really nice. So we're getting there. We're gonna start having some work nights again. We're having meetings back inside the bays now. And we're getting there. Guys are coming together and it's going forward. Plus, we have about four new members to bring in. In the past, past couple of months, we've gotten four new applications. Two of them are also juniors, two more juniors that are coming in. We haven't had junior members in quite a while.
That's great.
So it's, it's really getting going.
Well, it is great. And I, and you see the ambulance, you know, the new people that have come on board. You know, it was kind of stagnant there for a while and now people are stepping up. So it's, it's really great. It really is. But I want to ask one thing about those trees. Those are our trees or are they the neighbors' trees?
No, they're ours.
Okay.
Yep, they're on the line. And one, top of one of the maples is, is split. It looks like it broke in the last storm. There's a piece hanging like, if the backside of the maple goes out, it'll probably hit the ball field fence and smash that. So they're, part of it goes towards the ball field, part of it goes towards where we park. So they got a crew of guys that are gonna take it down, clean it all up, so.
Okay, and you've given them permission to do that, correct?
Well.
Following our insurance?
I was gonna say, right after all, all of you say I can do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
But, yeah.
For insurance, they, we had to get permission from the fire chief. So yes, that's fine by me.
Yep, it's all licensed and insured. And then a couple of us are gonna help get the logs out of there and remove everything, plant the grass seed back in and go, so.
Great. And if you need public works guys and their trucks, just let me know or let them know. They're happy to help. Um, so, but while we have you, so it, picket and fiddling, I'm getting calls. I heard we're not, you're not doing that. Is that correct?
No, I know, believe Kenny Murphy did stop down at the town hall and say something a while ago, but we, we're not gonna do it this year. We were kind of waiting and it was in the stages of when we had to start ordering things and getting things lined up. The state was still pretty well shut down. And just didn't know with everything going on, how this was gonna pan out. And we couldn't lay the money out and put it out there and.
No, it's a lot of planning. It's a lot of work.
And, and other fairs around here that are early, they were canceling too. So we did, we canceled for another year, unfortunately. But we'll be back next year even stronger, so.
Good. All right, thank you. You have anything that's going on at the old firehouse?
Yep, we're back working in there a little bit too. In fact, I've got a, some foam that's expired that Clean Harbors through the state is picking up.
Okay.
And they'll be picking that up pretty soon. The forestry grant just came through from the state. That's on a little bit of a hold. It's a matching funds. We, it's $5,000. We put 2,500 up. We put the whole 5,000 up, then we show them what we bought. And then they reimburse us 2,500. I just got that grant, application and everything from the state. But the person that was in charge of it has retired. So now they've kind of strung it along for another month and a half or so. But we have the paperwork in, we're ready to go with that when they give us the green light, so.
Then what are you gonna be using that for?
Well, more forestry equipment, portable pumps, that sort of stuff, the backpack ones we use. And we can get a couple more of the pagers for guys, so.
That's great. Sounds like you're rocking and rolling.
We're, we're back.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that. And I, I do, you know, I think I could speak for the select member. Kind of sad that the parade didn't happen, but I'm glad that you all went out and did the things that you did. I, I went and visited with Gene Tierney afterwards, just so I could take a picture to show the wreath that you laid up there at Ed's grave site. But you all looked great. And I'll get those pictures posted some soon, I hope. And I'm glad you're getting rid of that foam because isn't that the bad stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And instead of, they were gonna, if you paid to get rid of it, it was, it was about $82 a gallon. But through the state, they, they did a deal through the state and the state paid for it. Part of Region 5 paid for it, I believe. So it's free to us now that we waited and logged it. I mean, I filled that paperwork out about a year and a half ago. And now it's just coming true now, so.
Well, good. Well, thank you again. And I'm glad to hear that we have new members coming on. That's awesome.
Yep, we've got some training coming up, up we're starting with. And we got our new electric jaws and spreaders for cutting cars apart. We have those in, they're installed. We had a quick training session on it. We'll be cutting two cars and a school bus apart here within a month.
Oh, geez.
So they are a lot faster and than what we had. And they're basically the same tools as what Southbury and then Milford and Woodbury's looking to buy in a set. Washington's looking to buy in a set now. So they're kind of the new future.
Good.
Battery powered, they go pretty good, so.
All right. Well, thank you for reporting in. Appreciate it.
Yep.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Yep, okay, thank you. Um, anybody else? Communications? No, all right. Commissions and board appointments. You know, the Council on Aging, they haven't met. I think that they, they just are holding off. So I'd like a motion to table that appointment on the Council on Aging.
So moved.
Oh, parents. Okay, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the cable advisory board. We should have made this appointment a while ago and we neglected it. But Gregory Davis has served on that cable advisory board for us for, you know, a couple of years now. And it's time to reappoint him again. So he does a great job. He attends all the meetings.
What is cable advisory board?
It's a, you know, charter spectrum.
Yep.
And, you know, fighting with, with that all the time and rates, et cetera. He just keeps an eye on, on what's going on and reports. He actually. Wait a minute, Russ, Russ, you gotta have, you gotta get louder.
Pretty much how the state allows a monopoly to exist.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh. Okay, do I have a motion to appoint Greg Davis to the cable advisory board? Four-year term.
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm trying to just take some notes of who's saying what because Julie's not here, but. Okay, the conservation commission, we have a four-year terms. Kathy Massey. I need a motion to appoint Kathy again.
So moved.
Okay. I need to hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Conservation, again, four-year term. Lorenzo, he's relatively newly appointed, but he was to fill a vacancy that is, the term is up. So I need a motion to appoint Lorenzo for a four-year term, July 1st.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Conservation and alternate, this is, was a really short appointment. Jessica Patterson. And so now it will be for a full four-year term because she filled a vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recreation, all right. We have Missy Cole for a four-year term.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Recreation again, Missy Erdman. Four-year term.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last recreation for a four-year term is Rob Hardy.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He's also known as Santa Claus. Okay, ZBA alternate. I still do not have a name from Nanette, so I need a motion to table the ZBA.
Make a motion to table the ZBA appointment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I believe last month I read a letter for resignation of David Gardner, who has been our tree warden for the past 14 years. He started on May 7th, 2007 and resigned on May 7th, 2021. I have ordered a plate that I will certainly get to him. And so he has a vacancy that expires in November. And I would like to get a motion to appoint Jonathan Lord as our new tree warden.
Good choice. I make a motion to appoint Jonathan Lord as a new tree warden. And thank you, David, for all the great years he served us.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah. He served us well.
He did.
A good guy, good guy.
Jonathan knows his stuff, so.
Yep. He's certified with the state and everything. So I need a second for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, under business, we are looking at the 2022 revow. And we went out to bid, looking for proposals for the revaluation. We got four bids from $35,000, another one for $35,000, another one for $58,700, and one for $62,000.
So who missed what?
The assessor evaluate all of them. And she is making a recommendation to hire E-quality valuation services for $35,000.
I'll make a motion to hire E-quality evaluation services for $35,000.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we finally got our local bridge, the state, local bridge program grants. And I have a letter here that I need to sign and get back by the 9th. So I need to do this tonight and get it in the mail. But it is a conditional commitment to fund and for Davenport, which we started and we need to finish, the state is awarding us $330,000. Now, the request was for $660,000. And they usually pay up to half. So we did get half, which was nice. And this is something that we have put money aside for to complete the balance. The low bid that came in, we did go out to bid. We let people know that we were waiting on funding. And the low bid was in the $700,000. It was by NJR Construction. Now, the last time I spoke to him, it's Nick Jr., he was willing to wait because our engineer was saying, maybe we should just say, we don't know when we're gonna get this funding and we will go back out to bid for the next construction season. Some, one of the, the part of the culvert, I guess, is gonna be difficult to get. I think we're gonna find all materials are gonna be hard to get for no matter what is going on. And, but I would like to give him the option of staying on through next year, even if this has to wait until the spring, if you agree with me, instead of going out to bid again. He definitely was the low bid. It was over a million dollars, some of the bids that came in. And we've worked with Nick. Actually, he built our sand shed down in the, in the back. And he also worked on Willers Bridge at one point. So we, we know him.
So he's gonna stay on? We want him to stay on for that, his bid price, his quote?
Yep. Now that I'm, because what I want to do, and I've talked to him in between, saying, we're waiting, we're waiting, you know, I'm really sorry. But, you know, and I feel bad because the state held us up so long that these guys lost this construction season where they were counting on this because they knew they were the low bid. But they knew that I could not award it to them because we didn't, if we had awarded it to them and they started, we would never have gotten the money. If you start the project, you can't get the grant. So we waited, you know, since October. And now we finally have it. And I'm going to ask him tomorrow if he would still stay on. Otherwise, we're gonna have to go back out to bid and we'll definitely lose this construction season.
I think it makes sense to keep him on as long as the bid, his price stays the same.
Correct. And I mean, the, um, the state is hoping that we can get these projects done now. And I mean, they just ruined everything. It's not that easy, you know, it's not that easy to, to do and get it, get it done. The other one, we put in three requests. One was for Botsford Hill. I didn't get anything for Botsford Hill, but I did get $778,000 for that big culvert under Minor Bridge. Now.
The one that looks fine to me. But the bridge that looks like it's falling apart, we got nothing for it. I get it.
I know.
That makes no sense.
What I would really like to do is, with your permission, I would like to call the state to see if we can switch this money over to Botsford. It really does have to get done. And.
Yes, please.
So anyway.
Tell them that makes practical sense.
Of course.
But you probably lose them there.
I know. But in the meantime, because we were so far ahead on Davenport and we did go out to bid and we have somebody waiting and we're ready to go, we're going ahead with Davenport. On this one, we didn't have all, quite all of the information when we applied for this grant. So we need to have the engineering services for Minor Bridge. And Cardinal has provided a proposal. And the total design fee is $23,500. All of this can be taken from the grant that we get. The balance of these two bridges, there's, is gonna have to come out of the Town Aid Road Fund, which we know.
Wait, well, hold on, because you're jumping from bridge to bridge.
I know, yeah.
The 23.5 is for what bridge?
Minor Bridge.
Okay.
Now, the bridge or the culvert?
The culvert.
The culvert, okay.
Minor Bridge Road Bridge over Battle Swamp Brook. It is for, it is for that $700,000 grant. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's not Battle Swamp, it's a unnamed tributary.
Wait a minute. Now that you, now that you're saying this, he was gonna get me this for today. And I'm reading this and I said, I need this proposal. Because he was getting me a proposal to fix Minor Bridge, those, all those little things that we were supposed to get done.
$23,000, the design stuff, that's.
No, this is, no, I took, no, this is definitely the precast concrete three-sided box culvert.
Okay.
So that's what that's for. So what, so what is our plan of action? What I would like to do is be able to call the state, see if there's any way we can switch this money over to Botsford. If they say no, we're kind of crazy to turn this down because it's, it's, it could be more than half of what it's gonna cost to replace that minor bridge culvert.
Well, the only problem.
And I have to, I have to, I have to answer them with the yes, we're gonna go forward. We're not going forward this year on this one. And.
My guess is they won't let you do that, knowing the state. They're gonna tell you, you got a grant for that culvert. You wanna fix the culvert, accept the grant, move on with your life. Submit another application for Boxford Hill. That's what they're gonna tell you.
Well, since we, I mean, this, this one was up in the air because you guys didn't really agree that was really necessary to do.
I still don't.
Let me, let me just chirp in here.
Yep.
A lot of this is because Cardinal didn't say a word about Botsford Hill.
No, no, we hired Leonard. We stuck with Leonard for Boxford Hill. Cardinal had nothing to do with it.
That's right.
Right.
Then when Cardinal goes through the bidding process or alongside of us, obviously, we didn't get it for that because they had nothing to do with it.
Right.
Even though that's the one that needs to be done. Cardinal's all over this Minor Bridge culvert, which honestly, I really don't think it's a huge issue for quite some time. I think it's solid. But, you know, they're the engineers, but for some reason, a million plus to put a new pipe in there. And Botsford Hill is starting to collapse.
Well, the structure on Botsford Hill is okay. It's the, it's the infant, it's the outer walls and stuff that are falling off. It's really a cosmetic thing, but there is some undermining, obviously.
And you need to change the structure. It's a twin pipe.
The twin pipes that needs to get into a culvert.
Right, right. So I think we need to ask Leonard to take another look at it and submit another application. I mean, it wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt for Barbara to ask, but if they say no, then we should accept the grant for the Minor Bridge culvert.
I think I should send the letter in and then, I mean, so later on, if it really comes down to, hey, you know what? We really don't want to do this. We've turned, there's no, well, there's really no harm done because we're just.
No, no, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna get the money, we should do it, Minor Bridge culvert. Because in time, we will have to do it.
Yeah.
And the money may not be there then.
Correct. I think I send these two acceptance letters back tomorrow. They want them by the 9th. They want to know who's gonna work on their bridges so that, or who's ready, who's not? Where are you? When is your completion date? And then some people may just fall by the wayside because they've waited so long and they really don't know what they're gonna do, other towns. And I don't, I don't think there's any harm in sending this in. And then go from there and I'll ask, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
So $700,000 for Minor Bridge culvert in.
778, 778.
No, that is half.
Yep, of what we requested. So you know what? The bids could come in. Actually, the, the, for example, on Davenport, the original assessment was higher than.
I think it's gonna be higher on Minor Bridge because it's a huge project.
Yeah, it is.
Huge.
Well, then, you know what? I mean, so we get this, we find out what it really is gonna cost. And then if we can't do it.
I'd like, I'd like to find out what it really is gonna cost. And then we know how far that 700,000 is gonna go.
Well, that, that's what this 23,000 is gonna find us. It's gonna get, it's gonna get the design and everything and we'll get it out to bid and we'll find out where we are.
And Cardinal's doing that. Yeah, we gotta know before we, I'd like, before we accept the 700, that the balance is gonna be another million.
Well, but I, if we, if that, if it comes that it's higher than the half of, that we could provide, then we could turn it down at that point. But I think we almost have to go for it.
It's a lot of, lot of money. I know it's not gonna get any cheaper.
No.
It's gonna also last a long, long time. It's been there since 19. It's been there since 1941.
Well, you're convincing yourself it needs to be done.
Anyway, all right. So, can I get a motion to allow me to sign these commitment letters for Davenport and for Minor Bridge Road Culvert, um, as well as accept the proposal for Cardinal Engineering to finish the design for Minor Bridge culvert?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, CPace. This is, uh, an energy plan that I thought we voted on a couple of years ago to move forward with and it was allowing nonprofits to apply for this program with the state. Well, as it turns out, that's all we did and it never went anywhere. And so, um, they're asking, why isn't the town taking advantage of this program? It's, it's involved, it will have to go to a town meeting and what I would like to do is turn it over to the Conservation Commission to, um, I'll give them the information that they sent me recently and let them decide if this is something that this town should sign up for. It's an energy program and, um, there's no harm in looking at it and I, that's what I would like to do, if that's okay, you know, cuz the Conservation is an advisory board to this, to, uh, to the selectmen and this is a project that I think that they could look at for us.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
I went off video cuz my camera went out.
Oh, okay. All right, I don't know that I need a, um, a motion on that, but I will absolutely hand it over to the Conservation. I believe they meet on Wednesday, so I will let them know. Okay, the Housing Authority. We knew, um, uh, Jocelyn Ayer from our COG headed up this Housing Authority, um, program workshop to see if, about the interest in this community for people going forward with it. And, um, there is interest, there's like, I think she said, oops, six to eight people were interested in going further. Jim, did you ever get to sign up because that was the night we did the EMS?
Yes, I came in late, but I was there for the last third of the meeting.
Okay. So, what did you think? I mean, there, she said that there are people that are interested and what she would like to do is have the next steps of what, what would have to happen to have this Housing Authority? And we know that there are other towns that have housing authorities. We do not. It is not a government run, um, and it's gotta be from the outside. So, if she has seven or eight people that are interested, she's looking to set up another meeting on June 15th at 7:00 PM to say, okay, then these are the next steps.
Yeah, I'm all for the next meeting. A lot of those people are interested, but not interested in being a member of the Housing Authority.
Okay. So, they're not interested in being, running this, taking it and running with it?
They were all over it, like it's a great idea. You know?
Somebody needs to do it.
Somebody needs to do it. Now, you might, I mean, there is the, the Stoffakers, they were very interested in what was happening, but I don't think they're gonna jump in and run it. And so, I do believe we should take the next step, but somebody's gotta step up to the plate.
Yep.
And if we're gonna have a Housing Authority, step one is to get five people that wanna create this.
Right.
And then, so, you know, there, there was a lot of talk, how wonderful it could be, how great it's gonna be, and everybody agreed. Then it's like, okay, who wants to join, join up?
I know.
Silent.
I, I mean, the next meeting, it happens to be a Board of Finance meeting also. I don't know that they have a whole lot, so I will definitely try to be on that meeting at some point. I don't know that, maybe the Board of Finance will cancel their meeting because the budget's been voted on, it's, and a-
Yeah, definitely Roxbury needs to go forward with the Housing Authority. That's the only way we're going to, uh, accomplish anything that the state is trying to, uh, have us do.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. It feels kinda strange though that, um, I don't trust Jocelyn. I don't. Um, they're out there advocating for desegregate Connecticut, which I find to be, um, I don't, as I expressed before, I don't, I don't like the divisiveness of that term, as if we're all prejudiced people. And then they, they, they join those groups, they push for this, and then when the state passes a law, they tell us about grants that they could help us with.
Right.
Um, like, okay, so you're making work for yourselves. So, I, I, I'm bothered by that. I'm just, I think it's a good idea. I think we should move forward, absolutely. I think our zoning commission has done more for, uh, to make affordable housing in the last few months than any of these people who get money from these grants. And that, I, I think that's what this town needs to look at is what could, what, exactly what zoning's doing and the direction that zoning's going in, what could we do, um, to make it more affordable? And it's not about the color of your skin or your race or, or your religion or any of that. It's about everybody. It's about everybody, no matter what. We wanna make it more affordable to come to Roxbury for young people, um, to live here and be a part of this great community and have their kids grow up here like mine did and, um, and have the, the treasures that this town has to offer. So, I agree with Jim 100%. We should go forward. I, I just don't trust the people leading it because, um, on the other side, they're advocates to pass these laws to take away a town's right for, for what its zoning should be. And zoning protects us from a lot of things. From, protects us from environmental stuff, from over parking, all kinds of stuff. Nothing to do with race or segregation, not at all.
A Housing Authority is going to do is just like Litchfield, Washington, Cornwall or whoever, all of them. It's a, a group of people that go out and solicit funds and that group of people buys a house. And when they buy that house, they sell it back to a couple that qualifies. They don't sell it for more than what they paid for it, they sell it for less than what they paid for it. And it's what the first thing the Housing Authority, I mean, zoning, we can create all kinds of apartments, we can create duplexes, but the person that owns them, price on them. And the person that owns the apartment, they're $2,000 plus. That's not affordable.
Right. It's kinda like a land trust, right, Jim? It's kinda like the land trust buys land for everybody.
Housing Authority gets this money and then they sell and the next time you can sell it, but you can only sell it for, I think, 10% more than what the first couple paid for it. And you have to qualify, the 30, 80, you know, 80% of the median and you pay no more than 30% of the, 80% of the median for your rental or your purchase or your mortgage. And it has to be subsidized. Subsidized is the word. So, the town isn't gonna take tax dollars and help young people. It's the Housing Authority that's gotta be made up of realtors, uh, bankers, anybody then, money, can get some money.
Yep. Well, I think, I think that, um, you know, the fact that, that you both agree that, yep, let the, let the next steps-
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Because, you know, this came up after we did, um, a smart growth and, you know, asking people if they were interested in this Housing Authority and they looked to us and it's, it's not up to us. It has to be separate. It's gotta be like the land trust. It's gotta be a separate organization. And if they're not willing to step up, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
But I think if we can keep giving the information on what it entails and the success of some of the other ones, um-
Maybe somebody will step up, right?
Right.
But if we stop it here, it'll go nowhere. We need to support it, absolutely.
All right, so I will, um, advertise that, the May 15th, um, sorry, June 15th at 7:00 PM. Okay. All right, we have a chip seal schedule coming up and that's, uh, they were sweeping and they've been patching and everything. So, next week should start on like Falls Road, Shalbys Road, Tofit Road, Bacon Road, Mine Hill, Painter Hill, um, Century Hill. It's just got a lot of chip sealing going on for this year, but we have a schedule and we're keeping to it. And we will spend about, well, let's see, if we did all of them, it's gonna be less than a 150,000 to do all these roads, but we, we budget for that. So, I just wanna let you know that that's happening. People to drive slow after that. Um, and I will let people know about that. So, the Shipog River update. There was a letter that came out, uh, you know, Russ, 24 years ago, this was one of our, um-
Election, our campaign promises.
Promise about the Shipog River. And, you know, we stuck with that and, uh, came a long way and here, didn't really hear anything for 24 years. Things were going the way that they should. Now, it's creeping up again because what, Waterbury's not holding up to what is-
Well, no, it, it's complicated. It's complicated. There's good news, there's bad news. Edwin Matthews, my hat off to Edwin, cuz he's been watching it on his own with his own money.
Yep.
And, um, the, the previous, uh, manager of the water company was very difficult to deal with, wasn't giving us much the information we really needed to understand whether they were complying with the court order, or let's call it the court agreement. We hired a consultant, I know Barbara, today you got a bill?
Yep.
You got a bill and that consultant found basically, to put it in short order, they generally complied. There, there's been a few missteps, but the problem is, is their infrastructure, they're not keeping up with it. They have, uh, they haven't been keeping up with it. They have a lot of water loss and what that means is every bit of water that gets wasted doesn't go into the Shipog River. But the bottom line is the water that they should be putting in the river has been going in the river. The problem is the Cairns Reservoir, which is the biggest, five times the size of the two Shipog reservoirs that feeds the Shipog River. The valve there has been three quarters shut for three years now, which means the Shipog reservoirs are feeding most of the water that the town of Waterbury, but they still have been complying. Now, they have a new manager, his name's Rob Langler. Hope I pronounced the name right. And I've been talking to Rob a lot with Edwin and Ethan, another person on the Shipog River Association. He's a smart guy, seems to wanna do the right thing. He's been very cooperative, very open in all the information, uh, that he's given us. He comes from the MDC, so he comes from the Metropolitan Water District, which is a very professionally run water company. No water company would run with 35% losses. They have meters that they don't even know are accurate. And it's not Rob's fault. Uh, this is, this comes down from history. He's trying to fix it. Um, I, I want us to keep a cooperative, uh, relationship with Waterbury. Personally, I, I don't wanna be telling the city what it should be doing. But Edwin feels, and I'm, I, I have a different viewpoint on this, but Edwin feels that we have a great opportunity right now to help Waterbury get their conservation plan together, to fix their leaks. They have the money. They keep telling us they have the money, especially if the infrastructure bill passes. A lot of the leaks are connections to homes. Those homes are owned by the homeowners. They don't have the money to fix the lead pipes that go to their houses. The new infrastructure bill may give money so all those pipes are replaced. This isn't really about Waterbury not complying. They haven't been perfect. This is more about Waterbury should be doing a better job of conserving water and maintaining their system so the Shipog River doesn't suffer because of it. The Shipog River Association's asking the town, as you know, Barbara, they asked Washington for $10,000 and Washington joined right in. I'm not willing to add, to donate $10,000. I, I think we should, um, just put up $5,000, commit $5,000. Because here's what's going on. We had this, uh, consultant, Amy Vickers. She's a water consultant. She knows all about water companies, how they should be operating. And we paid her $10,000 to figure out what Waterbury was doing right, what they were doing wrong, or maybe $5,000, I don't know. But now, Amy has recommended we hire another consultant. I forget his name, but he, he can't give us a price because we don't know how much he'll be needing. But he's an expert in water infrastructure, so he's an expert in valves and, and meters. So, he would be looking at Waterbury's plans to replace all these things and working with Waterbury to tell Waterbury whether it's the right valve to use, whether it's the right meter to use. Now, my opinion is why are we, these two little towns? And they're asking the two land trusts that donate the same, $10,000 each. Why are we paying for this?
Right.
Um, where, where's the state? Why is the state doing their job? The Department of Health is supposed to get their conservation plans from the City of Waterbury, Aquarium, all the water companies, and they're supposed to approve them. And they've gotten, uh, Waterbury's years ago, haven't commented at all. Our consultant, Amy, Amy Vickers, said the conservation plan that Waterbury has is, she, she used too many words that I don't wanna insult Waterbury with, but basically, it's an insufficient, inadequate. Waterbury did fire that consultant, but they haven't hired a new one. They feel they have the management expertise in-house to do what needs to be done. And in some ways, I agree from what I, I know from talking to, uh, Rob Langler, that they do seem, he replaced the whole management team there, that they do seem to know what they're talking about. They seem to be very, um, willing to do what's right, cuz this is what's right. I mean, it's wrong to just waste water and let a river suffer because, cuz you can't, cuz you can't manage your system correctly. But it isn't the current manager's fault. He inherited the problem, but he does have the expertise to fix it. So, the 10 grand that we're being asked for is to hire this consultant to watch Waterbury. In some ways, I agree with Edwin that it is a, it is a good critical time. We, we are at a place where we could really do good by watching them to make sure this gets done right and that this guy isn't just giving us a lot of bull. And then, as soon as we go away, they go right back to letting valves rot and all that stuff. And that's why he wants to hire this, this consultant. But the consultant didn't give us a price. He, $185 an hour, whatever it is. I spent 180, I, I spent a hundred hours, you're gonna build, you're gonna get billed 18,500 bucks. That's the way it is. I think, after thinking about it, we should have a meeting with the town of Washington, Steep Rock Association, land trust and ourselves, all the players to get a better hand on, what's the goal here? What's, what's the, what's the, I, I'm willing to, uh, to pledge $5,000 tonight, but I'm not willing to just write a blank check. I, I, you know, we represent the taxpayers. We can't just say, okay, whatever it takes to get Waterbury in line. I also wanna see more pressure on the state to get involved and do their job.
Well, I don't disagree. This guy's name is, uh, Jim Smith and he's out of Houston.
Yep.
So, why, like you said, why are we paying for that if Waterbury has already said they have the money?
They have the money and they have the in-house expertise. They fired their consultant. Why we're paying for it is because in the past, we trusted Waterbury, only to be burned, only to learn that a valve has been frozen three quarters of the way shut for three years.
Okay, but who's, who was watching that? I mean, that, that was all-
Well, Edwin and Amy Vickers, but they weren't provided that information. That information just came to us because this new guy in Waterbury has been totally open with us. Told us things that we didn't know, um, that he would have been required to tell us under the agreement. So, we learned a lot in the last few months, spent a lot of time, uh, time I don't have, but I'm, you know, the river's important and I'm willing to give whatever I gotta give and I know this town, a lot of people in this town feel that way. Barbara, you and I hiked it this fall. It's, it's a treasure, and it deserves protection. I'm with Ed all the way there. But I'm not with just handing out blank checks. I'm not. I, I think all parties involved need to meet and have an understanding of what are we doing? Why are we, why are we paying some guy from Houston? Now, he came because Amy Vickers recommended him. All right, there was no bid, there's no, you know, I didn't want them to sign a contract with him until they got approval from all the towns and land trusts, but they did anyway because they got approval from Washington, and they felt the ten grand would be a good start.
Well, that's the problem, a start. So, I mean, I'm a, I would, I, I agree with you. I think that, thank you for representing Roxbury, because when this started coming up again, I was getting emails from Edwin. I knew that you would be able to lend your expertise on the, the whole water system better than I. And it's been, it's been many years. I mean, I spent a lot of time in Hartford when Blue...
Yeah, you did.
Was there, and...
Yep.
Came through. So, um, but I also agree, why are we just gonna hand ten thousand dollars over? I think that we need to have a plan. And I don't know if you can set this up with all the players. I think that that's a good idea. You know, the land trust is asking questions. We already got a, we just got this bill today. The invoices are totaling eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and our share, which we would split with Washington, the Roxbury Land Trust and the Steep Rock Association, is each twenty-seven eighty-one twenty-five. And so they're looking for that, that, that money now.
Do we agree to that? I think a while ago we might have, but this came out of the blue.
I, I don't know that we agreed to anything. I think that it was brought up in a discussion, but we didn't say, yeah, we're good for ten grand, like Washington did. We didn't, we didn't do that. We did that twenty-four years ago. And then we had a big fundraiser, and we raised money and brought attention to the river. But I would have to go back because I don't believe that we did.
I, I remember agreeing to five thousand dollars for consultants, but I thought the bill already came in and was paid.
You might be right.
And I didn't know there would be more. Now, I know Amy now has been involved in the last two months. She's been on all the calls. She reviewed Waterbury's conservation plan and commented on it. Went to Waterbury and met with them in person. So I know she's been doing things, but she's out of Amherst, Massachusetts. So...
All right, well, to move this along, maybe, I, I can't remember if we've paid five thousand dollars. I don't know. Do you remember, Jim? I can't, I can't remember that we did that. I really don't.
You have to ask him.
Yeah.
I, I think the next step is let me talk to Edwin and get a meeting with all the parties, because the Roxbury Land Trust has the same questions.
Yep, yep. They want to know about the consultant, who hired him, what is his qualifications?
Right, and what's the bottom line? I mean, we can't write a blank check.
No.
Can't be whatever his bill comes in, we'll pay it.
So do you want to make a motion that if we already paid the five thousand dollars? I don't believe that we did. Then we hold off on this twenty-seven hundred eighty-one? I'm not even sure where I'm gonna take it from, but if we did not pay the five thousand dollars to put this twenty-seven eighty-one twenty-five, pay it? What, what are you...
I would pay that bill. But we need to look in if we did agree to that. We can't just get a bill and pay it. We wouldn't be doing right by the taxpayers.
Well, the, the thing is, is that this, this eleven thousand dollars, Edwin put out the money. But that can't keep going on and then coming back and saying, here, you know, this is your share of that.
No, you need a meeting. You need a meeting, and we gotta set the rules.
Yes.
As a group, not just us calling Edwin, making an agreement, then the land trust got a different agreement, and Washington's willing, okay, ten grand, whatever you need.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta set some, set it up a business way, you know?
Yep.
Gotta be limits, and we need to know what the expectations are. What are we paying for?
Where did the eleven thousand go?
To Amy Vickers.
In Amherst, Mass.
Yeah.
And she's a consultant.
And a water consultant, like for water companies.
Okay, and what's this guy in Houston? Is he a consultant?
He's a consultant. He's a consultant on water engineering structures and things. Valves, flow meters, all the things Waterbury needs to change. You know, right now, they have flow meters that they're not sure are accurate, which isn't good for their business. They don't know if they're charging their clients. They're probably charging them less than they should be, is the bottom line.
How long has Amy been on board with us?
Since the, since the, she was an expert witness in the, in the case twenty years ago.
And who was paying her up to this point?
Edwin.
I mean...
Shipog River Association, really.
More than eleven thousand in twenty years?
Oh, well, yeah, back during the, during the court thing. Of course, she was paid through all the donations and stuff. It was millions of dollars. Not for her, but the whole thing with the lawyers and everything.
And the state did step up also to help with that.
They did. After John Roland went to jail, yeah. They stepped right up.
And the five thousand that we're not sure if we paid or not, was the five going to Amy as well?
Yes, everything goes, Amy's the consultant.
She's the only one we pay.
That's right. Edwin, Edwin leads the chart.
Ten thousand goes to Houston if we jumped on that bandwagon.
Well, he doesn't know how much. His rate is a hundred eighty-five an hour, whatever it is, it is.
So he's getting ten thousand from everybody just to have enough to...
No, we're, we're putting it in a bank sort of. We're pledging ten grand each, so there's forty grand in the bank. And so whatever he gets a bill, he gets paid. He's not saying it'll be forty grand.
Yeah, but the problem is...
Ten grand, it could be five grand, it could be a hundred grand, I don't know.
But my, my problem is, is that he has been hired, he has been retained already, and somebody's gonna keep paying them, and they're gonna turn around and try to get this, our share of whatever it is. Who signed this agreement with them?
The Shipog River Association, the way I understand it.
We can't find anybody any closer than Houston?
This is a person Amy recommended, and I guess that's the way you just go with that.
That's the wrong part.
Personally, I think that Waterbury should, we should be talking to Waterbury about hiring a consultant.
And let them pay for the consultant.
Right. Now, this, from what I understand, and I may be wrong, they don't feel they need a consultant. They have in-house expertise. And if they come from MDC, they're probably right. I mean, that's a well-run organization.
Okay, then I think that's what, what I would ask you to do is to go back and say, you know, Jim Smith from Houston, don't be doing any more work on our behalf until we have this meeting. And then, you know, if they have the consultants in-house, why are, why are we funding it?
We're funding it to watch them, to make sure that they're doing the right thing. This is a slippery slope because taxpayers cannot be financing environmental causes. That's not right. That, that needs to be done through donations and things like that. If it's about the agreement and about the protection of the river, then I agree, the taxpayers, Roxbury, needs to step up and protect that river. But I, I haven't come to a conclusion whether this is an environmental cause to get a water company to do the right water conservation, or whether it's, if it's... And in the end, that helps the river, I get it. But my point all along has been, if they are following the agreement, then I don't care about anything else as far as going to the taxpayers of Roxbury. I mean, do you agree with that?
I agree.
Okay, so what are our next steps?
I will talk to Shipog River Association and ask for a meeting between all four parties who are gonna be footing the bills so that we could get together a plan.
And I'd like a copy of the agreement. What, what, what did they sign on our behalf?
Well, he sent you a, a bill today with no bill.
Right.
Where's the bill?
Right, it said they have three invoices.
This is what you owe us.
We need the bill, but I'd like to see the contract, too.
Right.
You are going to set that up, that meeting. Right?
Right.
Okay. And we're not paying anything until I get some information.
Correct.
Well, it's the same with anybody, with you, Barb. You don't get paid till I get, till I understand, so, and I agree with that.
Okay, good. Oh, my gosh, I'm gonna have to do the minutes on this meeting because Julie's out.
Julie could do it with, watch this, watch the meeting, right?
Okay, well, thank you for that report, Russ. I can't believe we're talking about the Shipog again, and here it is, twenty, twenty-something years later. But it's there. Okay, the next item is Shelby's Road West. We have, I did send a, a copy of the map. Jim, I'm really sorry, you can't see it. So it was a property at the end of Shelby's Road.
Could you share it, Barbara?
Well, I mean, I can hold it up. How about that? I can hold it.
Oh, you can't click on your computer and, if you have a copy on your email, no? All right, we know Shelby Rose Road West, right, Jim?
Yes.
You know, part, part of it's discontinued.
Oh, here, wait a minute. So if I share, what do I do? She, oh, how about share, share my screen? Okay.
Right, right.
Share my screen? Here we go. Share. Are you, are you seeing it?
There it is, yeah.
Got it.
Oh, all right. Oh, see, see, I got all my emails here.
Live and learn.
Yikes, okay. Okay, so anyway, I need to get rid of this. I've got a lot of stuff here. I don't know what I'm showing here. Let me open this like this. All right, so, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get this to where it's seventy-five percent so we can see. There we go. All right, so my, I'm looking at, Shelby's is down here, coming down. Let me see if I could get a little bit smaller maybe so we get it all. Okay. So here is the cutoff. Do you see where my, my pointer is here? That is where the dirt road ends, coming up from sixty-seven.
So it's three hundred feet, Barbara?
Well, they're looking, so anyway, this is very nice right here. The stone wall ends, and you can go in and have your driveway go right up here.
Right.
But they want their driveway out there. This is an approved building lot. So now they're saying, could you at least come up three hundred feet, and then we'll change the driveway and come in up here? That's easier said than done. First of all, for us to make this road wide enough and something that, you know, our emergency services can get through, it's gotta be widened. A lot of trees have to come down. We have to put in drainage, or it'll just wash out because...
You need, you need a survey, because you can't just go plowing, plowing a road on somebody else's property, not knowing you're doing it.
And so if, coming the other way is unbelievable, because this goes up and around and up again and comes out.
Yeah, the other way is really, really tough, tough stuff. I remember walking it. Jim, did you ever walk it?
Oh, yes, many times.
Okay, so you know. Well, I mean, you're in a big rush, Barbara. If you're in a big rush, move your driveway. But if, if we're gonna do, do the road, then we need time. That's my attitude. We need to have it, we gotta do it right. We can't just blow it in. Those days are done. You need to have it surveyed, and, and you need a, an engineered plan for drainage. You can't just, we'll throw a cut space in here, what, you can't do that anymore.
I agree, so...
And that's gonna take time.
Three hundred feet is beginning at just past Mary Annamare's, because it's improved just past her house to the next little cottage. Actually, it's improved more.
It's improved farther up. It's improved to this line going across.
Right.
The map doesn't show, but it's a long, it's a long way down there by that cottage. So, but it's, but it's really nice. I had the guys clean this out, it made it a nice turnaround. Got it so that there's a nice entrance here. But, yeah, it's a long, it's a long way. It's...
You said three hundred feet was needed to satisfy the property owner.
The potential, the property owner is selling this to someone who is saying, I wanna buy this piece of property, but I want my driveway to come in higher up than where you're telling me it has to come.
Well, tell them a year from now, well, we need a year.
Okay.
Now, you need to talk to Gail whether we're bound legally to even do this. I'm sure we are.
I think if you have an approved lot, you've gotta give somebody access to it.
Right. And that's fine, but we need, we need a time, we need to budget. You need, we can't just spend, this is gonna cost a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
We can't just, we need to budget it. We need to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. Hire surveyors, engineers. We're not gonna blow in a road like we used to, right, Jim? Do you agree?
Oh, of course. And even back when we rebuilt, I was telling Barbara, Rocky Mountain was nothing but a path from the end of the paved section all the way down to River Road. It was just a hiking path. And then people bought the property, built seven homes down there, and the town built the road to get down to those seven homes. They had to.
Right.
It was a town road. We had to improve it. The only way you don't is you take them off the map. Town meeting, and they take them off the map if you don't want to fix them up.
Well, after this, I think we should seriously look at the rest of this, because this is, you know, it's open on both ends, but it is pretty steep in there and windy.
I mean, are there lots up on there with potential lots?
If there's potential lots, we cannot create a landlocked situation.
Right, right. Well, we'll have, like you said, Barb, we need to look at that later, but for now, we need time. We need to, but we're not saying no, but this isn't happening in a month. We're not, I'm totally opposed to road crew going out there with a grader and just rough grading something in. And they need a wetland permit to do this.
Yep.
You can't, this, this is gonna require a wetland permit.
Yeah, I mean, we gotta be able to get a fire truck in here, and...
Right.
So, so I will tell the Realtor to tell their potential buyer that we will open the road, but I can't give them a date when. We have too much to do.
Right, and, well, not that. We didn't, we need a lot of time. This stuff takes time.
Yeah, all right.
It, it does. This stuff takes at least a year to, to plan, budget, do the survey, put it out the bid if the town's not gonna do it.
I know. Okay, all right. So that, stop the share. There we go. All right, the next thing is Old Roxbury Road. The booths have requested that the, we turn that section of road between Bacon Road and Lower County over to them.
For how much? I'll take it for five million. Right now, five million.
I, I'm not, I didn't even...
They didn't mention a number? We just give it to them?
No. I didn't even get into any of that until I find out if you are interested. First of all, we'd have to go to a town meeting.
Right.
And what they wanted to do is basically put a fence or a gate up by the, on the Lower County side, possibly also at the Bacon Road side. And I didn't get into all of the details. It was just, is this something that we could pursue?
Well, here's a good one.
I don't know.
No. Not, no way, not while I'm here. I don't know what Jim feels, but that's a town road. People were walking it. It's a, it's a cut through for everybody on Bacon Road and Upper Grass Hill that work. In different places, they go to Route sixty-seven using that road. They have no right to want to take it over. But if they do, we'll, we'll listen to five, ten mil... But if they do, we'll, we'll listen to 5, 10 million if they wanna, if they wanna purchase it from us, but we're not gonna give it to them. But I, I think the discussion shouldn't go any further, but I, you know, I'm one, one of three.
We don't own the road. If you write, we don't own it. We don't have deeds to all these town roads. So when a road's discontinued, it goes back to the bounding property owners. If we voted to discontinue it, then he's the bounding property owner.
Right.
On both sides, he owns everything on both sides.
The town doesn't own the road.
Well, I'm not willing to discontinue it, there's no reason to discontinue.
And it would take a town meeting, and, and that wouldn't, probably wouldn't happen.
Right, I said, you know, well, we, so we would not be plowing it, but you would still need emergency services, you'd need police, maybe, and, and.
It's a long, it's a long, we have private drives already in town, and this would become a very lengthy private drive.
Like Frisbee Road.
Sure.
Which made sense, because it was one house and the road was in bad condition going down to Washington. This is a well-used road, not really well-used, but I know somebody that walks their dog there four times a day. It would, a lot of people would freak out if we ever let this go to a town meeting.
Interesting part is the age of the road. And you might find a lot of historic entities stepping up to the plate, because that is obviously Old Roxbury Road.
Right.
Probably is the oldest road in town, and you might get a lot of pushback from historical societies.
Pushback if we abandoned it.
Yeah, exactly. It's like Lower County Road and Upper County Road, you gotta go to Litchfield to get permission to do stuff on that, it's a county road.
Well, so, am I pursuing this discussion for dollars, or am I?
No.
No.
I was only kidding. I was only kidding. No, I have no interest in supporting this.
I won't support it, but at the request of the property owner on all sides, you might have to go to a town meeting and get it shut down. He can petition to go to a town meeting.
And he could, he could do that, but I think it's, I don't want the, as a member of the sport, I'm not gonna support it.
No, no, I wouldn't.
Goes to a town meeting, good, because then we'll get, the whole town will show up.
Sure.
I could guarantee you.
And put it to bed.
And put it to bed. I'm not worried about that.
I don't know if the three of us can just tell Mr. Booth no, and then have it happen.
I guess you'd have to ask Gail.
Yeah.
All right, well, I will go back with the, no, the selectmen are not interested.
Not at all.
All right. Um, I just, I had signed, uh, I gotta thank you for signing this anti-Semitism statement, and I just included it, so that you know, I posted it on Facebook. And, um, they said, "We appreciate your moral clarity in standing together with other mayors against anti-Semitism, from the Global Jewish Advocacy." Just put that in there for the record. Um, all right. Transfer station. So, we already, we went to town meeting, we're moving over to HRRA. We have signed the contract, I'm waiting for the contract to come back signed. Uh, we are, you know, we're, we're signed up with them, they are gonna, they are gonna take over all of our hauling, contracts, et cetera, it's like a relief, it really is gonna be a relief. They're very good with coming out and they, you know, educations in the schools, and so we'll probably see a lot more about that and recycling. Um, they are looking for us to separate our glass, I know that our operator is not excited about that, but, um, uh, we are gonna meet up there, the executive director of HRRA and I, and our, our operator are gonna meet up there. We have a new bin up there right now, uh, much bigger for all of our recyclables. You know, cans and bottles, recyclables. But, so, uh, we're selling a lot of our permits, they're really, people are signing up.
Flying off the shelf?
They are flying off the shelf. But we have this situation still, with property managers, as most property managers do not live in town. And I know we've talked about it, but we really haven't made a final, final decision. We do not, um, give permits to people whose vehicles are not registered here. However, the people have property managers, and there is an awful lot of, uh, stuff that comes in, in these pickup trucks from these property managers. There might be two or three houses at a time, and so, you know, they're getting one permit, for, if they get it early, it's $50. And so, the homeowner may be purchasing that, and then they're giving this to this person who's coming in from another town.
Well, when you purchase it, don't you have to put the license plate on, at least I do?
Yes.
So that, that's a violation of using it, they should be, the permit should be denied, and now they gotta hire somebody to bring it to Danbury. Which is what they should be doing anyway. I mean, the transfer station is for people to bring their household garbage to, not, not to bring dumpsters load of stuff, and I've seen what these guys are bringing in.
I know, it's a lot.
It's crazy.
It's a lot.
It's gotta stop.
Hire a local guy to bring it and pick it up, and they would be bringing it to our transfer station.
But then he's a hauler.
Right.
And he needs a hauler permit.
Right.
And I, if I gotta tell Albert, you gotta start enforcing that. You can't bring somebody else's garbage to the transfer station, per state law, without a, without a hauler's permit. And you need all those things that a hauler needs to have to get the permit.
So you're saying that a property manager's gotta be considered a hauler?
Absolutely. That's what he's doing.
Well, some, like I say, have multiple homes, and some have one home. And, uh, and they're just bringing in some trash, but there is, there's a lot of trash coming in for a little permit, and if you buy it early, it's $50 for the year, so it is, it's.
Right, and so, we're punishing the, the small guy in town, the small girl in town, uh, who brings a bag or two or four of garbage up there, and these people are coming in with trailer fulls.
Okay.
They're haulers.
That's what we wanna do? We wanna make them haulers.
Absolutely, they are by definition. They're hauling garbage for somebody else, not their garbage. The permit is for you, this is the car you're gonna use, and you bring your garbage in a car, your own garbage, and you throw it in the bin. If we don't get a handle on it, they could be bringing stuff from places they work in Bridgewater and Washington. What stops them from doing that?
Nothing.
So they need a hauler's permit, or they need to hire a licensed hauler to pick up their garbage.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think I'm gonna try and go that route first, because a hauler's permit fee now is going to HRRA, we will get a transfer station permit fee. That's all we're gonna get. So, we're not, we're not gonna see that money. We're not gonna see the hauler's money. Permit fee.
All right, well, the goal is to make this fair, and I don't care whether we see the money or not. If you're hauling garbage for somebody else, you're a hauler. And you need a permit.
So when you say HRRA is the, our haulers, hauling to our transfer station, or hauling away from?
No, HRRA is, um, documenting all the haulers, and giving that, they're registering with HRRA, so we know who they are and where they're going. Most haulers cannot go into our transfer station, and they are hauling people's garbage, they're doing it now, and they're going directly to Danbury.
Right. And that's what they should be doing.
That's what these guys, like Russ said, if you're a property manager, and with multiple properties, take it to Danbury.
They got like a, a truck, not a dump truck full, but a trailer full of garbage. It doesn't belong going to our transfer station, it must go to Danbury.
Well, some of them are really overloaded pickup trucks, and, um, they are allowed in our transfer station. You know, it's.
Not if that tag is not for that pickup truck.
So if they get registered as a hauler, they pay the $250 registration fee, then they can also buy a permit from us, and then they can go there. But we're not realizing.
They have to bound by our rules.
But I don't wanna give them a permit, because they're from out of town. And in the past, you know, someone would come in, I'd give them a letter, and then it was the same guy every week going there, so Albert would know who it was. But we're not getting what we should be getting, for the amount of trash that's going in there.
Which is why it shouldn't go there. It's for the townspeople, not for multiple properties of Airbnb, which is commercial businesses. It's like the Roxbury Market, paying a landscaper to bring their garbage up to our landfill, or up to our transfer station.
We don't take commercial.
Well, these, these, um, property managers are commercial, those are commercial enterprises. They're making profit, taking care of people's property. They shouldn't be allowed in our transfer station, for that reason and that reason alone. Those are commercial enterprises, they're operating as an LLC, and they need to go to Danbury with it. And Albert needs to, and he needs to be told, because right now he's doing the best he can, with the direction he's been given, he needs to be told, no, they can no longer come in here. And it could be nice, it could be, I'll let you dump this today, but this is it. Don't come back here. And again, if the permit on the truck is for another truck, the permit should be revoked. It's, it's in the, it's in the regulation, it's in the ordinance, if you, if you use another car, if you take a sticker and you put it on another car, you lose that sticker.
Well, then we need to send a letter out to the community and say, this is, because there's.
Do an email blast. Property managers are no longer allowed to use the transfer station. The permits provided to people are for their cars and their cars only, you can't put it on another car, and if you're doing that, you're gonna get it revoked. Property owners are a commercial enterprise, and that needs to go to the Danbury transfer station.
That's the first step, is when the permit is issued, your registration is recorded, and that's the car it's supposed to be on.
Correct.
And, uh, so that's a simple start to it. Up here, I, I am a property manager, I have four estates, and we were hauling a pickup load a week for 50 bucks. And we, on our own, stopped, we went a six-yard dumpster, and everything goes in it, I haven't been up to see Albert in six months.
That's right, Barbara, they, they're taking advantage.
Yep, well, I know that, and it's like, how do we stop this, you gotta stand up there.
That's how you stop it, you tell them you could get a dumpster, or you could hire a licensed hauler. They could hire the guy that we hire, that hauls everybody else's garbage away in town, who doesn't do it themselves.
Jeremy Johnson.
Like Jeremy, for an example.
Yep. Yep. All right. I'm gonna have to stand up.
You're very low Barb, I can't hear you.
No, I said, okay, I'm gonna have to stand up there. Push him away, let him in one more time, and then that's it. But I, I, I need to get something out to everybody. But that is the way to do it, it's just not fair right now.
Is there a particular day that Albert sees more of these, um, property managers, Tuesday, Wednesday, Saturday? Probably more during the week?
Probably Tuesdays and Saturdays.
I think. Because I'd have Bill Cario just go up there Tuesday morning at 8:30, bring lunch, and stay there and give Albert a little support.
In fact, we'll buy his lunch. I can't hear you Barbara, you.
You can't.
Jim, could you hear?
Yeah, I got her.
Weird.
All right, moving on. Okay, COVID-19 updates, you know what, we're open, we're open to the public. Uh, most people that walk in the door have a mask on, the people who are working in town hall are really not wearing them unless they're uncomfortable. And, um, we're looking to start, uh, opening up the senior center, and also, um, start using the bus again, and we're just really have to decide if we're going to allow the 12 seats to be full to go somewhere, or are we gonna make it six seats, so that there's space? Uh, I don't know, I don't know what to do with that just yet, I, I think that they can fill the bus myself. Um,
I agree.
I'm working on that. And the state, you know, is obviously gone in, uh, in the right direction, I mean, it's almost all gray right now, instead of the color red that it was for a long time. All right, so the last thing is the Fire Marshal's report for February, March, April, and May. They had, just, just to, can you hear me Russ?
Yeah, a little, go ahead, we're almost done.
Yep. Um, to, all right, so she's working with this gentleman, he is the new National Fire, I don't know, maybe instructor, something, program manager to implement a new state system for submitting all the quarterly call data. The training took place in February, and all the 2021 NFIRSs will be sent directly to them and not through the state. They are working out, trying to work out a landlord-tenant situation. They have investigated different complaints, they've had, uh, on Route 47 for a burn pile that I guess might have gotten out of control. So, um, let's see. What else does she have? She's been do some training, one on fireworks, one on legal liabilities, and one on food trucks. Um, and then they were reviewing the vet clinic, and like I said, she's been, um, there has been a modification from Mr. Debold for an additional display barn on his property. And she's looking at that and the sprinkler system, et cetera. She said, "Chief Wheeler and I have been working to get all the fire reports caught up and submitted to NFIRS, and spoken regarding weather, weather conditions and open burning on a regular basis. The firehouse has been put back in order after the possible arson incident, and all reports and supporting documents have been provided to the state police major crime and the town's insurance carrier. As the housing market continues the upward trend in sales, we have assisted with tank pull requests, both new and old, as in the past." Um, and our resident trooper, during the month of May, had 324 calls for service within the town of Roxbury, and it includes investigation, motor vehicle stops, patrol checks, burglar alarms, medical assists, et cetera. There were five criminal investigations conducted, criminal, non-criminal investigations. There were five accidents, one fatal. Fifteen infractions issued, 32 warnings, and then, then that left 267 miscellaneous requests for service. On Monday, the Connecticut State Police Traffic Unit was in town, they conducted 25 motor vehicle stops for speeding, operating a motor vehicle without a license, and failure to wear a seatbelt. And Officer Cario volunteered with We're Angels Play Foundation and helped build a playground in Massachusetts. We have three post-certified officers at the time, no other issues or concerns. The body worn camera grant is active, I've asked for our resident trooper to keep pursuing that. He's getting quotes, and, um, right now, the current grant will refund 30% on initial cost for a first-time install purchase of body worn cameras and in-car dashboard cameras, which is now the law. And the biggest thing with that is saving those tapes, which is gonna be the most expensive part of it. And that is all I have. So we're doing well, we're gonna be ending the fiscal year here on June 30th. Kim Barron took a well-deserved week off. And, uh, we're holding the fort. Anybody have anything else?
Very good.
Have a good night Roxbury.
That's right Roxbury. All right, thank you, I'm gonna miss you guys, I only got five more months, all right. All right, good night.